At 9:26, if we go, please stand. Mr. Johnson, a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Fire evacuation announcement. In case we need to evacuate this room, there are two exits. One directly in front of me. You go right out those double doors to the outside. Or go the doors to my left, taking immediate sharp left through the double doors, down the stairs to the outside. Roll call, Kathy?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak? Mr. Feely?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Rancourt?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Chairman Neville?
Here. I'd like to beg everybody's indulgence for the long delay. We apologize and hopefully we can speed up this meeting and get you out early enough. The approval of the minutes, item six, the regular meeting minutes, June 12, 2012. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Joyce, second by Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Any opposed? Passes. Special meeting minutes for June 13, 2012.
I'm in favor as well on those.
We got you.
Hi.
I should have noted that Donna is talking to us via phone from California, right?
Yes.
Very good. I apologize, I didn't mean to slight you, Donna.
That's okay. I just wanted people to understand that I am listening and participating.
Very good. Can I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for June 13, 2012?
Motion.
Moved by Joyce, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Donna?
In favor.
The approval of minutes for the special meeting minutes for June 26, 2012. Entertained a motion to approve those meeting minutes? Moved by Joyce, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Donna?
In favor.
Very good. Right on cue. Finally, the regular meeting minutes for June 26, 2012, including the public hearing minutes related to the certification of the Children's Internet Protection Act. Entertained a motion for that? Moved by Joyce, is there a second? Second by Tina. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Any opposed? Donna?
In favor.
You're on record, very good. Item seven, board guest. Do we have any board guests at this point? Very good. Correspondence and communications, I'm going to hold this until the next meeting here. Audiences, is there anybody here that wishes to speak to the board? Nobody on the list there? Move on to item 10, board member comments, and I'll start with Jen.
I just wanted to come out and say, I'm not sure if all parents are aware, but most children, I think it was K through 6, receive math packs during the summer. So they might be hiding, but it's already the second week, so I say you open them up and start working on them, because our teachers worked hard to put them together. And also JFK also has packs, and I know the 8th graders are supposed to be researching a scientist, is what I've gotten from my teenage nephew. And also, there will be the summer reading list for the high school students. So, that's it.
Very good. Joyce?
Well, since Jen did it again, I'm just going to reiterate what she said. The math packets went home for all the elementary students, and actually it looked like fun. Some of them are calendar-wise, so they give you a task to do on a particular day, and some days with no tasks. So by all means, look at them and follow through.
Kevin?
Just want to say it was a great Enfield celebration this week, and over in the community booths, we saw some of our town officials speaking on the high school consolidation. It was really good to see them out there trying to educate the public as to what's going on. Thank you for all who attended.
Donna, do you have any comments?
No, I'm going to keep mine simple, because I'm on telephone, and I appreciate being part of the meeting, and I think this is an excellent policy we have.
She's not even going to tell us about Yosemite?
Next time.
I will tell you when I come back.
Sounds good, thank you, Donna. Vinnie?
Oops. Nothing much, I just want to welcome Dr. Schuman and Chris to their first board meeting. Been eventful already, huh? But no, welcome, many more, and to our new employees that are in the central office. Welcome, and many years there. That's it.
Tina?
I'm going to second what Vinnie had said. It's nice to look over, and we see Dr. Schuman and Chris now, and I'm happy to see Jill and Tony and John and Guy and Ann here, and I'm looking forward to moving forward and having a great next year and a half with you guys.
Mr. Johnson, any comments? Sure. Like the others, I'd remiss in not welcoming you at the beginning. We're really pleased to start your meeting off, your first meeting off, and having all of you here, and I know Dr. Schuman will be doing some introductions shortly. It's nice to look after all the scurrying we did to hire you, and it was well worth it. We're very pleased with the folks that we've hired and the cabinet and the team that you folks have put together. So we welcome you, and hopefully we will run our meetings a little bit closer to on time in the future. Chuck?
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure if it's been mentioned here yet or not, but I would like to thank the people that were involved with the 4th of July celebration. Has that been mentioned?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I just thought it was a truly spectacular event. I was there two of the days that the event was going on, and the 4th of July, to me, is, you know, an extremely important part of our history. I mean, it's a great time for a celebration, great time for picnics and getting together with your family, but it means a lot more. It means that this was the start of our nation. And it's all about the liberties and the freedoms that we, that people 230 years ago put together and decided that we had these, and it wasn't given to us by a nation, that it was inherited by us just by being born here. And it was truly, it's truly a remarkable thing, and, you know, we fought for our rights then, and we have fought for both our rights and other people's rights throughout our history, and I think that, you know, it's just a truly remarkable day and a truly fantastic thing that we have been able to maintain our liberties and our, you know, what we believe in for the last 230-plus years. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 11, superintendents' reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item on the superintendent's report is under the title "Making a Difference." Congratulations are in order to the board, because you have made a difference. You've made a difference by assembling the leadership cabinet that is seated here tonight. I'd like to take a second just to introduce them to you. Our deputy superintendent, Mr. Dressick, our chief academic officer, Ms. McKernan, our chief personnel officer, Mr. Coleman, our chief finance officer, Mr. Letizio, our chief information officer, Mr. Barassa. This group is a highly committed group of individuals who are passionate about their work, and they are committed to making a difference for every student in this Enfield school system. The item under "Making a Difference" talks about a parable. There's a parable there, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it. It's a parable that you may have heard sold in different ways, but the story behind it is about a young man who is walking on a beach, and he's picking up starfish, and there's starfish all over the beach, and he's throwing them back into the ocean one at a time. And an older gentleman comes up to him and asks him why he's bothering. He can't possibly save enough of the starfish to make a difference. And the young man picks up another starfish, and he throws it back in the ocean, and he said, "Well, for that one, I did." Before you, you have a box. It is a gift from the leadership cabinet. It is the same item that the members of the cabinet keep on their desks. It reminds us always that we are in this to make a difference for children, for every child in our school district. Each principal in our district will have that same gift given to them when I meet with them. It is going to be our focus. We are going to make sure that at the root of our work is making a difference for the children of this community. So congratulations again, you've put together a wonderful leadership team that I'm proud to be part of, and we promise you that we'll come to work every day with the intent of making a difference for every child in this community. And so feel free to open that gift, and you'll know why I told you the story when you open So when you do your work at the board and you open all those important correspondence, when we're not using them on the iPad, the paper ones that are still coming.
Very good. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, and thank you.
And thank all of you, we're very, very pleased. I think we're, I know you're excited, Dr. Schuman, to start this year. We're excited with the team we put together. We're very, very pleased, and we expect big things from you, and we expect you to make a difference. We know you will. Thank you.
Remaining four items on the superintendent's report are very self-explanatory, but I will answer any questions if you have any.
Just as a point of information in terms of the public hearing.
Yes.
This is the hearing that's going to make the decision on the question for the referendum? Is that correct? Or?
I honestly don't know the answer to that. I was just warned of that, it's not part of deciding whether that meeting was happening, I'm just passing information to you that the meeting is going to take place. Perhaps the board members.
It's in your packet.
Okay.
It's the hearing memo.
Okay. And just as a caution, this is the, after that question is set, and Donna, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that limits our ability to advocate, is that correct?
Yes, it does.
Okay, just so that we're...
What we should get is, we should actually get a legal opinion or a legal guidelines for what we can actually say as private citizens, because we all still are private citizens in the town of Enfield.
If I could ask...
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the rule that would be in place would be that we are not allowed to expend any public funds for or against the motion. The members of the board...
That's correct. That's how much I knew, but...
So in terms of, you know, you are representative of the board, you will listen to your constituents, and you may certainly voice your opinion as to what you feel is appropriate in terms of a course of action, but we may not advocate any public funds. That would also include the use of the school system's email to discuss your point of view. But when you are out in public...
When you're in, you know, on TV or on the board, there are representing the board on the net.
Correct.
There's been some question along the way as we've gone through this process and different interpretations, and, you know, I think Donna is right, that we could get some interpretation, maybe from, Art could get it for us, or we could get it through our own attorney as to what we should be doing and not doing.
We'll provide that for you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, and our next summer meeting is the 28th, correct?
That is correct, our next regular meeting.
Regular meeting is the 28th.
Of August.
Of August, that's correct, not Donna. Okay. Anything else, Dr. Schuman?
Unless you have questions, I'm all set.
Any questions? Move on to item 12, board committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Well, I was delinquent last month, so I have some. And part of it is a report on the Talented and Gifted Program, and I'm providing you with brochures from that program. As you know, there'll be 24 in the program. There have been many more than that, who are being, giving additional testing, and if all of them qualify, those beyond the 24 will be put on a waiting list, should there be any dropouts or changes during the course of the year. And I believe that the application for the instructor for that program has already been announced. Has it been, has the decision been made yet?
Not at this time.
Thank you. We also discussed the writing of the curriculum that was to be done this summer, and that there will be several groups who would be participating, and we have been given an outline of the format, which unfortunately I don't have multiple copies of, that will be used. But keep in mind that it is different from what has been used to date, because we're working with the common core in developing the curriculum for the future. And both the method of writing the curriculum, before we had two columns, now we've got several, all of which will be completed during the summer for several of the subjects, English and math, from grades 2 through, and 6 through 8, with the anticipated rollout being done by the end, by before the school starts, and that both Ann McKernan and Dr. Schuman will be participating in whatever is coming out of those curriculum packages. We were also given a report on the number of items that were purchased we will be getting... Oh, where'd the report go? Oh, language books, math, English, social studies. All of these books were the result of the appropriate review by the departments in charge, so that we are sure that it will fit in the curriculum that will be being used Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board committee reports? I told there's no accounts and payroll to approve at this time. Unfinished business, number, item 14, approved, nutrition service price increases. This item was tabled at our last meeting on the 26th of June. I don't recall whether it was tabled, whether there was a motion on the floor or not. Yes?
There's two motions on the table.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them to you again?
If you could, yes.
Ms. Hall moved, second by Mrs. LeBlanc, that the Enfield Board of Education accepts the nutrition services price increase request for the FY 2012-13 school year. Also, Mr. Feely moved, second by Mrs. Suzak, to amend the original motion to increase elementary lunches to $2 and secondary lunches to $2.50. Those are the two motions on the table.
And they were both, one is the motion, the other was the amended motion, right? And it's, we tabled it during discussion, I assume. Okay. Do you want to continue that discussion? On the item, one was to approve, I believe, what the, Mrs. Edwards had recommended, an increase to meet our obligations, and the other one, I think, was to, by Mr. Feely, to increase it, so, this is my interpretation, so that we would do it one year and not have to do it two, and there was some discussion about that. Correct. It would last for a couple of years.
With the amendment, right, it would not only meet the increased needs, but also would, it would supplement and allow her to forego having to go through this again the following year. I do believe it was originally Mrs. Rancourt, though, however, that made the motion, and I seconded, but I could be incorrect, it was a while ago.
I just made the suggestion, but he made the motion.
That's right, that's right. But, no, so I don't want to make a burden to any family. I figured, based on looking at the other districts and what they're paying, that $2.250 were reasonable sums, you know, but I, again, I look for the judgment of the board to see what they say. There was, and forgive me, the name's eluding me, of the young lady who presented to us...
Diane Edwards.
Thank you. It's unfortunate that she's not here to offer her insights to it, but at the same time, it was just a suggestion based on the fact that seemed to go through it frequently, and it would lessen the frequency and the burden on the schools, and if there is actually supplement in that budget, I believe that it was, said that that amount would also forward to the following year, so it could do some good. That was the reason for the motion.
Jen?
Did she give you any more information to be presented? She knew she wasn't going to be here tonight, but I don't, I think...
It's the same information.
Yeah, Mr. Neville had sort of asked, like, what you thought, what she thought the impact of the extra money would be.
With the board's permission, we ask Mr. Letizio to come up. He has had that discussion.
Very good. Come on down, Tony.
Please do not touch this microphone. Do I press any buttons or anything?
Red, where's the red button?
For the first three minutes. Yes, one of the things that wasn't brought up at the last meeting was that the most that the state will allow you to carry is three months of operating expenses.
Oops. The most the state will allow you to carry is three months of operating expenses. For us, that would be about $587,000. Right now, we're carrying $555,000. So, so if we go, if we go higher, if we end up making a profit, which, as Mr. Feely says, we can carry over in food service, we may actually get to a point where we've got too much, and then we've got to start accounting to the state of how we're going to expend those funds. So at this time, and again, I'm fresh and new, and talking with Mrs. Edwards, you know, I'd really like to take a look at the program for another year. She's going through a transitional stage where she's trying, you know, she's got to go with the new foods, the new meal pattern. So at this point, if we were to go with her recommendation, and then we'll keep an eye on it for next year, one of the things that she did look into that we talked about and that the board was interested in, is allowing people to pay for their meals on account. I mean, through the internet, actually use a credit card, or however they want to do it, electronic funds transfer online. And what we'd like to do is, we'd like to proceed with that and do that for JFK and the two high schools for next year, and kind of use it as a test. On the elementary level, there's a lot of things we've got to do to get to the same point that we're at for the middle, for the middle school and the two high schools. But this would be a good test to see if this is all going to work, how this all works. There'd be a $1.75 charge for any transaction that they make, but if they've got children at the middle school, in the high school level, it would be just $1.75 for whatever they put on their children's accounts. If they've got three children, they could put money on all three accounts, and it's $1.75 for the cost. So again, we'd like to implement this, see how many people take advantage of it, if it's something that they're really excited about. And on the elementary level, we've got some IT work to do to get to the level that the middle school and the high schools are at. So this will give us a year to kind of look at this, but right now, if we go any higher on this, I'm not sure if we'd be able to do anything with it at this point, to benefit the children.
Kevin?
Based on that information, if it pleases the board, I have no problem removing the motion to accept it as amended.
The amendment.
And I seconded that amendment, so I would, in turn, will follow in Kevin's, too.
So then that would put the motion to the board, is the original...
The original motion, which was Mrs. Edwards' recommendation.
$1.75 for the elementaries and leaving it to $2.25 for the secondaries.
Okay.
I would move that we vote on that.
Any other discussion at this point? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
We're voting on...
Canceling the... No.
No.
They withdrew their motions.
They just withdrew it. So we're going back to the original motion, which was Mrs. Edwards' original recommendation.
Correct.
So just for clarification, this is the original motion?
This is the original motion.
Okay.
Made by Ms. Hall and Mrs. LeBlanc. Okay. Okay, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Moving on to item 15, new business policy.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to get, go through this.
Not a problem, go right in.
We have a couple of policies that I'd like to bring up, and actually, 15A is the policy revision to 5142. This is the policy on safety. I believe everybody has copies of this, and so what I'd like to do is make a motion that we accept this policy and use any discussion regarding this as the first reading of this policy.
Second? Seconded by Vinnie. Discussion?
Again, I'd just like to point out that our current policy is quite, quite long and lengthy, and what we're doing is bringing it down to the minimum, so that we can allow us a little bit more flexibility, and also, there's really no sense in having it be as redundant as it is.
Would I be correct that the rest of the policy that we're cutting out is actually going into the administrative reg?
That's right.
Okay. So it's still there, it's just being moved into the reg instead of into direct policy? Any other discussion on that?
I was about to say just about the same things. I believe this does not include everything that's possible, so this isn't complete, but it's all in the regs.
That's right.
So that's why it's been shortened, and this, so this doesn't have to be updated, the regulations do.
I don't think so. Need to vote on it, check on it.
Yes, we need to vote on it.
Is there any other discussion on this? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Donna?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And on 15B, we have an entry here to rescind a policy. This is policy 5141A. It's entitled Tuberculosis Detection and Prevention, and this policy is only being moved, the entire policy is moving into our administrative regs, and also, it is also handled by policy 5141.221, and as a result, it's no longer necessary, it's antiquated, and I would like to bring this forward as a endorsement to rescind this policy.
Second? It's been moved, Mr. Johnson, seconded by Vinnie. Is there any discussion? No discussion, roll call, please.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all I have.
We have one other item on the approval, the ED 099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs, and my understanding is this is something that's, Tony?
I have one clarification. It's just to allow us to, the new signative, the new superintendent...
Do we need a vote on that?
Yes, because you have the authorization to...
So it's a pro forma type thing, we're just changing the officers here?
That's right.
Okay. Entertained a motion to that effect? Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Vinnie and seconded by Joyce. Any discussion? All those in favor, by a show of hands? Any opposed? Donna?
I'm in favor, and I've signed that already, so paperwork can be submitted.
Well, if I said no...
You're so good. Okay, and my understanding right now is that we have need to go into executive session.
Motion.
Just one second. Action, if any, regarding administrative appointments, and action, if any, regarding the Simkevitz estate.
Motion. Executive session.
Wait for a second. All those in favor, by a show of hands? Any opposed? Are we all set?
No. We'll be going downstairs. Yes, we can. It's your choice, what have you done in the past? I think we've always gone down and just, we've come back, we can come back up here, it's fine. We need to? We can turn downstairs, right? We'll make the move downstairs, and then we'll...
We'll make the move downstairs, and then we'll adjourn downstairs. Okay? That'd be cleaner for everybody tonight.
Donna, are you all set?
I am all set, and I trust that everyone will be able to take care of administrative appointments, and keep it safe, so what happens?
We'll do that, Donna. Be safe up there, have a good time.
I certainly am so, and I'll hopefully bring back all these licenses here to show everyone.
All right, I'll talk to you later. Take care. Bye.
Bye-bye.
Tina, could you give that to Kathy, please? Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It just seems to be happening an awful lot. I'm finding it frustrating.
We did it.
We did it.